Donahue?
Here.
McKnight?
Here.
Roa?
Here.
Vogel?
Here.
Stern?
Here.
Jim, could you do me a favor? Could you do the precedence of allegiance? Because Larry on the phone, I'm not sure if he'll get an echo or not.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Jim. Appreciate that. Public comments. Katie, do we have any public comments?
Yes, Your Honor, we received one public comment from Josh Sheretz, who lives on Lord Street. He is commenting on the ordinance for adoption of the budget for 2021. He says on behalf of the Historical Society, he became aware that the $500 contribution that the city makes annually was at jeopardy last week. He said they cannot thank the city enough for their support of the Historical Society and wanted to let council know that those funds have consistently paid the admission to the Baldwin Reynolds House Museum for every third grade student living in the city of Meadville, as well as help to care and preserve two historic properties, a canal kiosk and a park within the city limits, all of which are public assets that contribute to the city being a great place to work, visit, and raise a family. He said this year has caused the Historical Society to be forced to cancel nearly $10,000 in fundraising events, which has hurt the organization substantially. And he said they understand the reason these funds were at risk completely, but they appreciate past support and any possible future support the city is able to provide in 2020. And they thank council for what they do for the city as well as what the city residents do for the Historical Society.
Okay, thank you, Katie. Andy, would you give us an update on a COVID-19 disaster update?
Yes, council, again, just the regular reminder that we still operate under a declaration of disaster emergency until further action of council, as we're all aware locally. And frankly, why we're meeting remotely is that locally cases have definitely ticked up here. I have no new information to report, obviously. I think we had met since, but there's a travel order restriction with respect issued by the Secretary of Health that anyone who leaves the state has to return with a, with certain exceptions, has to return with a negative COVID test 72 hours prior to reentering the state, or has to quarantine for 14 days, and enhanced universal mask order. What will be interesting to see how this interplays, just today, the Federal Center for Disease Control changed their guidelines with respect to quarantine for those individuals who were exposed to the virus but not experiencing symptoms. And so that prior guidance was a 14-day quarantine period that's now been reduced to a 10-day quarantine or a seven-day quarantine with a negative test taken after day five. So I don't know how that'll play with the governor's orders, if that might, or how that interacts, but we're still evaluating that. But just want to share that with council. So that's all I have, Your Honor.
Andy, and our lobby is still open to the public without appointments, correct?
It is, Your Honor. I mean, we've not closed the building to the public. We've obviously have, our employees are wearing masks, we've got barriers up that were required, frankly, since last summer. Truthfully, I think if there's risk, I think the greatest risk is us going about our daily lives and our own employees interacting with each other, probably less with very short-term interactions with the public, which are at the window base. So we'll continue to evaluate the system, the situation, I mean, but right now the building remains open.
Okay, thank you. Notices of executive session meetings, Katie?
Your Honor, executive session was held on November 18, 2020, to discuss personnel, and again on November 24, 2020, to again discuss personnel.
Thank you, Katie. Motion to approve the minutes?
Your Honor. This is Andy. I just want to inform the public that we met an executive session just prior to this meeting today at 5:30 to discuss a real estate matter.
Okay, thank you. Motion to approve the minutes. That was made by Larry II.
I will second.
Jim seconded. Any discussion with Andy? Roll call.
Donahue?
Aye.
McKnight?
Aye.
Roa?
Aye.
Vogel?
Aye.
Stern?
Aye. Katie, communications. Do we have any communication?
Your Honor, I did not receive any communications prior to the deadline for tonight's meeting.
Okay. Thank you. Andy, your manager's report, please.
Yes, Your Honor. So I'll note, so that communication wasn't received by the deadline and didn't make the final agenda, and we will put it on for the next meeting. I believe each of you received it individually, was a communication from Linda Cumber, from Chaps, and I think countersigned via email, if you will, through several other advocates. Apparently, there's an opportunity for additional Section 8 rental housing vouchers through the Meadville Housing Authority. And that request, that letter, that communication was requesting council support, asking council express support for that to the Housing Authority. So I will forward that communication to Bill Thomas, the Executive Director of the Housing Authority Inquirer, and I can share with him information with council after I speak to Mr. Thomas. But that was the purpose of that communication, which will appear on the next agenda formally.
Okay.
Go ahead, Your Honor.
Well, I was going to ask when the next meeting is for the Housing Authority. I was just curious. Do you know?
I don't know unless Katie knows off the top of her head.
Give me about 10 seconds, and I will have an answer.
Okay.
So it's the second Monday of every month?
It's Monday the 14th.
Yeah, their meeting is Monday the 14th, prior to our Wednesday, the 16th, meeting, our next meeting.
Okay. All right, make sure that they get that information. Appreciate it.
Yeah.
All right, what else you have? Your manager's report?
Just a reminder to council and the public, as shared by the Meadville Tribune, the Porter Street footbridge is now open. It opened early last week after we had taken, after the final fencing was put up and some other safety measures addressed. There's a little bit of work that'll be done in the spring, but the bridge is now open to the public. I don't recall if I had reported to council at the last meeting. We did, we received a notice that the city has been awarded a grant from the DEP Recycling Program in the amount of $208,507 for a purchase of an additional leaf vacuum truck. So our, we don't have the grant contract for that, but that'll come before council once we do. And that machine we put into service for the first leaf season this year was incredibly valuable and helpful in terms of manpower and safety, and so we look forward to that. The city's match will be approximately 10%, a little bit more, I believe, most of which will come from the Stormwater Program Capital Fund. That grant also covers some cart costs, recycling cart costs, and the annual recycling calendar printing costs.
And that new machine will actually reduce the need for manpower personnel for leaf removal?
Yes, for that crew, yep. I mean, we can, it'll extend our manpower to be doing, either to be doing additional activities, it takes less personnel to operate that machine than our current operation.
All right, thank you.
So in terms of gaining efficiency, yes, it's a nice help. I did note the Craft County Planning Commission shared with staff, and I had forwarded to council a link to their annual report. So I encourage you to take a look at that in your spare time. With winter now upon us, and I want to thank our Public Works crews, I think they did a fine job in the last 48 hours with a pretty significant and heavy snowstorm. But with that, with the Smock Bridge agreement that we have, where we, in inclement weather such as now, will do temporary closure of the Smock Bridge sidewalk, I believe tomorrow we start with the alternative transportation available through our agreement with Crawford Area Transportation Authority. So I will push out final public details, but it appears that that's scheduled to begin tomorrow. And lastly, Your Honor, I just want to note that light-up night is this Friday evening, this coming Friday evening. It's two entities, the Meadville Area Chamber of Commerce sort of oversees the lighting ceremony at the gazebo in Diamond Park. As part of COVID preparation, we expect that to be a shorter ceremony. I believe Santa is scheduled to arrive at 6:00 p.m. or Light the Tree by 6:00 p.m., so I encourage people to be on time because the ceremony will be relatively short this year. And Santa will not be, unfortunately, visiting with children personally as part of this event. But the Meadville Independent Business Alliance has an outdoor ice sculpture walk, if you will. There will be, I think, over 20 ice sculptures, small ice sculptures, all throughout the downtown area, Diamond Park in front of City Hall, the Chamber down Chestnut Street, Market Street. So I encourage people to come out to support, safely support downtown businesses, enjoy those ice sculptures. And Chestnut Street, the blocks of Chestnut Street will be closed to allow greater social distancing and pedestrian foot traffic. So Chestnut will be closed from Diamond Park to Park Avenue. Park Avenue, of course, will remain open, then between Park Avenue and Market, which will be left open, and then down to Mulberry Alley. So that's what we know about light-up night. And, Your Honor, that's all I have at this point.
Any questions for Andy under his manager's report?
Andy, I do have a question around how difficult the logistics are around closing down Chestnut for light-up night, and I ask this because I wonder if it might be a possibility to explore on Saturdays or Sundays throughout the holiday, when businesses might have to limit how many people can come into their shops, but we still want people downtown shopping to still allow that greater social distancing. I wonder, are the logistics around shutting down Chestnut Street simple enough that something like this could happen?
I mean, I guess the short answer is yes. I don't know where the trade-off is of eliminating on-street parking and access versus provide, I don't know where the trade-off is providing greater access, but I suppose if the request were to be made by the Meadville Independent Business Alliance, presumably that I would consider it.
Okay. And what about, like, restricting Chestnut to one-way traffic to still allow for that?
That becomes much more logistically challenging to sign and make people understand. So that I don't see as a possibility. Closure could be, I will tell you, I mean, closure is always a mixed review. It depends on your certain business and whether that's helpful or not to you. So I don't do that lightly, but given the extra ice sculpture event and the fact that light-up night is a public event, I think it makes sense. I'd want to have more discussion on a regular closure through the holiday season.
Thank you.
Any other questions for Andy? Okay, old business. We have a memo and recommendation with an appointment. Katie?
Your Honor, there is a memo here. As you are aware, a vacancy on the zoning hearing board was advertised in August, with applications accepted through August 28. The zoning hearing board received one application for a vacancy on the board. The individual who had applied for the zoning hearing board vacancy also applied for vacancies on the Planning and Zoning Commission Code Appeals Board and Housing Authority. At council's November 4 meeting, they appointed that individual to the Planning and Zoning Commission. Under the Municipal Planning Code, an individual who serves on the Planning and Zoning Commission cannot also serve on the zoning hearing board or Code Appeals Board, so there is currently no application pending for the zoning hearing board vacancy. It is the recommendation of zoning administrator Gary Johnson that Lyle Muck be appointed to fill that vacancy. Mr. Muck has served as a zoning hearing board alternate since December of 2018, and prior to that, he served on the city's Planning and Zoning Commission for 14 years. Mr. Muck has served reliably and diligently as a zoning hearing board alternate, making himself available to ensure the smooth operation of zoning hearings. If appointed, that would create two vacancies for zoning hearing board alternates, which would be advertised in accordance with the city's authority, board, and commission appointment process.
I would move to appoint Lyle Muck.
Is there a second?
I second.
Okay. Discussion? Any questions? Roll call.
Donahue?
Aye.
McKnight?
Aye.
Roa?
Aye.
Vogel?
Aye.
Stern?
Aye. Thank you. Under new business, we have a discussion of parking, reserved parking rates. Andy?
So council, as part of the budget adoption ordinance is when reserved parking rates are set. And we had had some discussion during the review of the budget and the parking fund itself with respect to reserved parking rental rates, but we've never sort of landed that plane, if you will. So I wanted to take the opportunity before we advance with budget adoption to see where council is on that. I will, I think we had reviewed the numbers, so I'll just review what I had shared with council earlier. We have approximately 171 reserved, I'm sorry, covered parking spaces in the Mulberry Street parking garage, and approximately 325 uncovered surface lot, if you will, spaces. The covered space currently is $45 per month, the uncovered rate currently is $35 per month. If we were to raise, just raise each of them $5 per month, that would raise in the total an additional $29,760 in revenue. If you assume the 90% occupancy, that's really about $27,000 of revenue that we might budget in the parking fund. I meant to check when we last raised parking rates, but it has been quite a few years since we've last raised the reserve rental parking rate. The draft budget that we reviewed for the parking fund showed, I need to flip back to it in my book, can I just one second? Shows for 2021, at the current rates, a net income in the black of just shy of $48,000. But you'll recall, as part of our, on the menu of budget adjustments, if you will, that we proposed allocating 50% of one parking enforcement officer's wages to the parking fund to the tune of about $21,000. So you would have approximately $25,000 or $26,000 remaining in the positive balance in the parking fund for 2021. I will remind council that the only reason that the 2021 parking budget is actually in the black is that the debt service is dramatically reduced by approximately 70, almost $70,000 this year, and that's because of the one-time savings from the refinance of the debt attributed to the parking fund. So next year, that debt service will return and will probably almost out of bounds the other direction. So those are sort of the circumstances, and at that, I'll just leave it up for discussion as to where you might be with respect to reserve parking rates.
Andy, I guess I'll start with one of the questions. Could you tell me the covered and then the non-covered? What is the current rate on both of those?
A covered space is $45 per month, and uncovered space is $35 per month.
And the reason for doing that, I would assume, would be that if you didn't keep a difference or differential between those two numbers, could we be losing parking out of the parking garage? I mean, was that the basis of why there's a differential?
I would probably recommend that you, if you were to raise rates, that you raise both parking rates in tandem, that fears if you raise, maybe for instance, only the covered parking spaces, which are a premium, right? My fear is that you drive, have the potential, or run the risk of driving people out of the parking garage to the surface parking lots, which we really wouldn't want to happen, right? We want to enjoy the density of the parking garage and its central location. So I guess that would be run the risk if, for instance, you only raise the covered parking.
Okay.
The rates? The rates in Meadville are, as I told you at the last meeting, considerably lower than in Erie. Erie makes a distinction between leased parking spaces and reserved parking spaces. So typically, in their parking garage, a leased space is around $62 a month, a reserved space is about $70 to $75 per month. So we're not, we're not being unrealistic in this, and the fact is that the covered parking does need some capital in order to sustain it.
I think we should raise it $5 each.
If you're making a motion, I will second it.
Yes, I'll make the motion. We raise it $5 each.
I second.
Okay, discussion on it? No questions, roll call.
Donahue?
Aye.
McKnight?
Aye.
Roa?
Aye.
Vogel?
Aye.
Stern?
Aye. So that's a $5 increase, will be going up to $50 for the covered parking and $45 for uncovered.
That is correct.
Forty, forty for uncovered.
Oh, I'm sorry, forty. Apologize. Okay.
Any other questions for Andy or statements? Under new business B, the first and second reading adopting the budget for 2021. Katie?
Katie, before you read that, give me one second. So let's, so there's a draft in front of you of that ordinance. So let's, so Section 5 of that draft ordinance has reserved parking fees, so we would, I would insert then, before we sort of read this and continue discussion, so based on the action you just took, Section 5 then will be covered parking at $50 per month and uncovered parking at $40 per month. And so before we actually read and proceed, I just want council to understand that that's what we'll include in this version that Katie's about to read.
All right, sounds good. Katie?
An ordinance of the city of Meadville, Crawford County, Pennsylvania, adopting and establishing a budget for all funds of the city of Meadville for the year 2021, including the general fund, debt and capital funds, Liquid Fuels Program Fund, Stormwater Management Program Fund, parking fund, real estate management funds, and special revenue funds, appropriating specific sums estimated to be required for the specific purposes of the various programs, and funds of the city of Meadville for 2021, and establishing authorized maximum personnel complements for certain departments of the city of Meadville for 2021.
Motion, please?
I motion.
Second?
I second.
Okay, discussion.
Counsel, I'll just quickly sort of recap where we were at the last special study session on the budget on early last week. What's shared on your screen is the same menu of budget adjustment options, and I will review that with you. On the last meeting, there was a consensus of council to consider a half-mill tax increase. You'll actually see that at the very bottom of the last line on the menu here, if you will. So a tax mill increase, I'm sorry, a half-mill tax increase would bring you revenue of $71,282. So I'll just do like we did last meeting, sort of start at the top of this menu. So we started with an imbalance of 653, 371 in the draft budget presented to you in early November. And we propose, this menu proposes then a transfer from the 984 Water Street from the buyout reserve and the real estate management funds of $176,200, as if we were continuing to lease that building. It shows here then a transfer from the rate stabilization fund, which is the source of that, or at least attached to this number, would be what we estimate to be the balance of the CARES Act funding received from Crawford County that won't be used this current fiscal year. I know we went over this last meeting, but again, I'll just do it for the benefit of the public that might be listening or watching later. So your lower left-hand corner here, the Crawford County CARES Act funding, the total of $505,867. We estimate that we'll need $130,000 of that to, well, between $130,000 of it, we would use to balance this year's budget, plus we would replace what was the planned transfer in, the budgeted transfer in from rate stabilization fund. So we would plan to use that, those two funds, for, those two, combination of those two for this year's current budget, would be $278,000 that would go into the rate stabilization fund and then be brought into next year's budget. I'll skip the additional transfer because that's for now. We proposed removing from the general fund an 88 ramp replacement expense and moving that to the capital fund. We also had in the general fund funds for abatement, so when we do grass weeds, sidewalk, property maintenance code violations that go unaddressed and we have to abate them, we move 30,000 of those costs out of the general fund and propose to fund it from a special sidewalk reserve, which is really just a one-time, it's a small reserve that's been held for that purpose. And then you'll see various trimmings of expenses from various departments. We're moving the gear expense in the fire department to the capital fund to the tune of $8,400, propose to reallocate a portion of one parking enforcement officer to, from the general fund to the parking fund, as discussed a few minutes ago. We had found where there was a, the place there, in the police budget was the NSYNC parking software, which should also, which is actually in the parking fund expense already, and so that gets taken out of the general fund. We reduced police uniform budget, reduced the police training budget, gas and oil in the fire department, reduced, small reduction radio equipment. This menu shows restoring, I think, based on last week's discussion, so the red restores then those two small donations to the Crawford Area Young Chamber of Commerce related to the Halloween parade, and then also the Historical Society. And then we had talked last time about what we knew to be increased expenses from when we started the process, which is going to be an increase in our audit of $5,000 due to the receipt of federal funds, CARES Act funds. We talked about an additional expenditure related for the city's portion of the stipend for a Vista volunteer for implementation of Strategic Management Planning Program priorities. We've, will have increased IT equipment lease expenses, and then you'll show the bottom line of additional revenue of a half-mill tax increase. After the tax, what we were reviewing last week, the, after the half-mill tax increase, we still were out of balance, we still needed an additional $43,000 to balance. And so up above, you'll see that I show, I propose as a one-time transfer also from the rate stabilization fund.
What's that leaving the balance of that stabilization fund, then?
Of course you were going to ask that. Debbie, is that something you can? Debbie, is that something you can?
Around 30,000?
Yeah, if you want to give me a second, let me pull that out real quick. Sorry, I'm sorry. It's about 34,000.
34,000, okay. Thanks, Deb.
Sorry.
So Debbie, though, it, just one question, if we, we wouldn't be taking the 97 necessarily from the 20, and for the 2020 budget, does that change your math?
Um, yeah, perhaps it, it would if that's how, yes, it, it would. It would add 97,000 to that 34,000. So if we add that 97, it'll be about 131.
So Your Honor and Counsel, I guess that's what's on the table right this minute, and I'll defer to counsel for further discussion. So the, I'm sorry, one last thing, so the budget, the budget adoption ordinance is pretty straightforward, so it's, it actually doesn't set the millage rate, it's actually the tax levy ordinance, which is next, but by, essentially, you act first to adopt the budget, which would reflect these various menu changes. And then by adopting the budget, use that budget to then inform the, the tax levy ordinance to raise the revenue needed. So that's how these mechanically work together, just so that you understand that.
And Andy, just to be clear, right, that, the menu in front of us does not, the menu in front of us does not reflect the changes, anticipated changes to parking fund that we just enacted.
They don't, they don't because they're not general fund, it's not general fund revenue.
Okay, right, okay.
So we're just talking about the general fund budget. Correct.
Okay, all right.
So in case I missed something, we need to amend section five to cover the proposed increase in covered parking and uncovered parking spaces?
Yeah, before we read the ordinance, yeah, before we read the ordinance, Jim, I noted that, that, that we would just administratively include that based on your prior resolution.
All right.
So this budget does rely, then, if, if counsel was to agree and adopt this menu, if you would, relies on quite a bit of one-time funds.
Andy, if we took a one-mil tax increase, then we wouldn't have to take and re, pull that out of the stabilization, correct? Where else would that save taking one-time money?
So, okay, so yeah, you would just reduce, so as reflected here, right, a half mil generates $71,282, a full mil generates an additional $71,000. So what you would do is you would, I guess you would replace that bottom line with a $142,000 in revenue, and you'd reduce the rate stabilization, the one that I, presumably just, it's one of the rate stabilization transfers, you would just reduce that by the requisite amount. So you would use $71,000 less of a transfer from the rate stabilization fund and rely instead on $71,000 additional revenue if you were to do a one-mil tax increase.
Okay.
So for all, for easiest understanding, you'd just reduce that second yellow line item by $71,000.
I'm thinking we should raise a one-mil.
I don't like raising taxes, but I, I would support a one-mil tax increase.
I would not support a one-mil tax increase. There may be some other savings that will appear during the year from some various sources. So I think a one-mil tax increase is not necessary or warranted.
Uh, I, I'm against, I, I had to change heart on this whole thing. I've been talking to a lot of people, and I don't want to increase taxes at all. Somebody jumped me and he says, well, how do you attract some new people into the city? You know, why aren't you guys trying to attract people? And I said, well, we're going to raise taxes. How are we possibly going to attract businesses or building to the city when we're already, I think, what was it, five times what they are paying in Vernon? I mean, it's right across the street, really, and so is West Mead. And I said, I just, I mean, we really, and I, we're already out for next year, even if you raise taxes, aren't we, Andy? Aren't we behind already?
Everything in yellow, which is one-time money, you could add that up, and that's where you start out next year, essentially.
All right.
As being out of balance.
It isn't doing us, I mean, you go ahead and raise your taxes, but you're still going to be way out next year, you're looking at a raise next year, too.
Right, but so if we don't raise at all, we're going to be more out next year, you know?
No, you have to really get serious next year and actually try to cut things or reduce something. We're gonna, we're gonna either have to find new revenues, which I don't think is very likely, and that, that's what I said, too, was that you realize, you know, we've had a, a real nice development down there where Sandy's was, and they put in a, a dollar store, and they're paying everybody minimum wage, all right? I mean, that's not a great thing for the city of Meadville, but it's a nice store, I like the store. But anyway, we're either going to have to reduce services next year, which people are going to have to get that in their head, that that's something we're going to need to do, or you're going to really raise taxes, and you're not going to have my support to raise taxes then either.
Well, remember, we borrowed $5 million that we know we didn't have a way to pay back, and we used that $5 million so we didn't have tax increases over the last few years. Am I correct on that, Andy?
Well, I mean, counsel did, right? I mean, you've, over the past several years, the, the prior borrowings, you have borrowed five and a half, over $5 million in new money for capital improvements, right? Street paving, new equipment, necessary improvements and services to our residents, but you've never raised revenue to pay for that debt service. So obviously, we have to pay that money back, we have not increased revenue to pay that debt service.
And we're expecting an increase of what, 136,000 next year?
Um, was that, was that the debt service figure, right? I think, yes, I think that's what we were looking at as the, as the increased debt service next year, that's correct. So that's on top of your out-of-balance figure now, essentially.
So just, I mean, I'm just using round numbers, we're going to be about 450,000 out right now, starting next year, and if we don't do something with the tax increase, we're going to be even further out.
Yes, that's correct.
So tonight, we have two issues. The first is whether to adopt the budget, which implies a half-mil tax increase, or not to adopt it. And then the second issue is to adopt the funding mechanism. Is that an accurate statement?
Those are the two actions, yeah. You have to, you have to adopt the budget first, and then, and then you, the tax levy ordinance, which is the second piece, is what funds the budget that you've just adopted.
So it's theoretically possible to vote to adopt the budget, and then for some members of counsel not to vote for more than a half a mil of tax increase. Okay.
That is correct.
I mean, the, this menu, right, so the budget that you're adopting is the entire binder, essentially. This menu, whatever menu you finally decide on in terms of adjustments, would be, would be incorporated by reference and adjusted in that document. So you would be adopting a total budget document, essentially, that we've been reviewing with the, with whatever adjustments you make and agree to prior to adoption of the budget and final reading of the ordinance.
Do we have a motion on the table?
No, there's no motion yet.
Yes, no, I have a, I have the first reading motion that was Deputy Mayor McKnight and Councilmember Vogel seconded.
We're in discussion of that now, right?
Correct.
Yeah, I just, I really want to, I, I quickly want to point out, too, so I had shared with counsel earlier today, the unofficial results of the unofficial survey that I had sent out, so 80 people had, had participated, 68 were from the city of Meadville, not a, you know, not a huge proportion, but 75% of, of folks said that they, they do understand and support raising taxes. To some extent, the way that the survey was, was broken down, the, the options of, of raising were raising at least one or two mills, which about 58% of folks said they'd be amenable to seeing a one or two mil tax increase, and about 21% said we should just cover the deficit, and this was before, this is when we had a larger deficit to cover, cover the deficit by a, by the full 4.58 mil. So, you know, again, it's, it's not, you know, it's, it's not a, a huge sample of, of the city, but it's, it's quantified, and at least it helped to show me that folks understand that it costs more to, to do business, it costs more to offer services, and that what folks value are the, so Sean, to your point, you know, about how we bring people here, I don't think we slack, you know, people care primarily about the fire department, and, and they, and they care about public work, what's that?
I don't, I don't know that those, I don't know that those are taxpayers, they could just be people that aren't paying taxes in the city, they don't pay property tax, that's all we're raising is property tax. I mean, I, you know, I don't know that they are. I mean, they could be, be tenants, and their, their rent might, may be raised, yes or no, but they're not paying a property tax.
Okay, sure, but yeah, so to that point, Sean, I mean, you know, you brought up talking to people, too, are, are they paying property taxes?
Actually, yes, yes, they're landlords.
Okay, great, sure, oh, good, well, let's do what the landlords tell us to do for the city. All right.
Sean, you said, Sean, last week, you said that you were going to come up with some ways to, to, uh, so we don't have to raise taxes, I haven't heard anything.
Well, I'll tell you what, I, I could tell you who to cut from departments, but I don't know who that would be specifically, it should be up to the department heads, okay? That should not be up to me, I don't, I don't work in the fire department, I don't work in the, the police department, if, if there's somebody that they could cut, maybe they should come forward and tell us. I, I'm, I'm, where's your taxes? Go right ahead, I just don't think it's.
So you're saying you, you, you want to, you want to take away, you want to cut our emergency services?
I don't know where to cut, I don't know what to reduce, that's just it. That's this, this list that Andy just gave us, that we're looking at right now, I wouldn't have known that, I wouldn't have known to reduce the police uniforms line item, that's not something I know, it has to be someone that handles the department.
Correct, so Andy has given us that, that is on the table, but we still are going to be out of balance. We need to raise taxes, it costs to run the city, yearly it's going to go up, that's, that's a given.
Well, how much, Andy, how much is it going to go up next year, just on the raises on the departments, it's already set? I mean, it is going to go up, I'll guarantee it right now, I've watched it go up every year.
Yeah, I mean, that's, that's what collective bargaining agreements do, right, between all three bargaining units.
I agreed to it, I agreed to it, Andy, it's not, you know?
So, I mean, just, I mean, and you, counsel, you're aware of this, right? 70% of our general fund costs are personnel-related. True save, true savings, right, are, are personnel, it's, it's reducing people if we're going to save significant money. And so that's where I think counsel needs to, needs to weigh in, if you're, if you're ready to reduce services, and, and, and that's by reducing people, right? I mean, that's, that's what, that's a reduction of services, we're barely, we're barely delivering services, you know, with the resources that we have, so we would have to, by reducing people, we're certainly reducing that service level even further, that's what people would have to understand.
I, I tell you, to make, to make it easier, hold on, to make it easier, I'll, I'll agree to a half-mil tax increase, I already said I would, and I will, but I just need to have some kind of commitment that we're, we're going to actually look at these and try to make savings next year, even if it's only $50,000 we can come up with of savings from the departments, start in January, we don't wait till August, and so this year, I, I'll give everybody a pass this year, because it was a crazy, crazy year, the pandemic made it a mess. I mean, here I am sitting at home, and I should be sitting there with all of you. So I'm willing to go with the half-mil tax increase, but I just, we have to really get serious next year, in the beginning of the year, I, I'm hoping we get to see each other instead of sitting at home.
Yeah, I mean, I will just say, I agree with you, Sean, I think that we, I, I think that we need to make commitments, I said this last time, I'll say it again, but I think we need to make commitments for the sake of the budget, but also for the sake of, making commitments to taxpayers, right? If, if we're going to increase taxes, you know, you, you can be sure that we're going to take steps that are necessary to, to be responsible, right, with the, with the city's services and, and with taxpayer money. And so, I mean, I, I, I think it's, it's worth making those commitments, like what are we committing to do, rather than just kind of saying it very vaguely, like what are the things that we would commit to doing, but I agree with you that that needs to happen, that we need to be looking at, at those kind of remedies for next year, but do it as a service to, and, and as a commitment to, to the people of Meadville, right, that we're being good stewards of, of taxpayer money. I listed some last time, I'll list them again, I, we've listed them a million times, I think it's worth articulating them. Sean, what commitments, what, what would, what would you want to see us do next year?
I, I definitely want to see third, I mean, I, we should have done it years ago.
Third-party billing, is that what you said?
Yes, and then I would like to see us come back to the, moving our dispatch to 911, at least look at it, I mean, it's worth, it's worth, I, we have two new people on council, three new people that didn't get to vote on it last time, and it's worth seeing, looking at it again, see if it's somewhere we can make some savings, and, and I mean, it is a, it's a big change for our police department, so they're, they're going to have to really be on board, but it's, that's, it's over $200,000 right there, that I know of. Now, I don't know anything else, I have to, there's always something, I mean, someone will come up with something if you start kicking it around.
Sure, yeah, I, I agree with, I.
Go ahead, Autumn.
I was just going to say that I, I agree, Sean, with, with what you bring up, I might also add, right, we've talked a million times about a county-wide reassessment, there's word that there's other municipalities that are interested in that, too, and if Meadville could, could take the lead in working with those other municipalities, I think that that could be an effective way to move forward with it. The pilot program, I know Leroy had mentioned last time, we'd have to start a committee, but I think Sean and Jim are, are part of the subcommittee for the tax exempt gift, the subcommittee, so that exists, and, and that's, and that's another way in which we can be making a commitment to, to be better stewards of taxpayer money next year.
When we talk about tax reassessment, I, I had a good conversation with Commissioner Henry, and he's very much willing to sit down in an open discussion for education purposes, to talk about reassessment, but a reassessment, which we can definitely talk about, we can be educated on it, but to be realistic with that, you, it, it is going to be a longer period of time than just next year, it could take up to a three-year period. And, and then, I, I guess, Autumn, you, you did get to speak to the city manager in Titusville, is, is that correct, that he was willing to also take part of this?
I'm not going to commit Neil to anything, but there is certainly discussion around that, and there seems to be some amenability, but I won't commit him.
Okay, so anyway.
But certainly, I mean, that is what, yeah, that is what I mean when I say that there seems to be, right, interest among other municipalities, and I think you mentioned a few others as well, Leroy, so.
Yeah, I think Commissioner Henry talked about the Farm Bureau, because, you know, I mean, we're talking, you know... know, I mean, we're talking, uh, you know, rural area of the county, so, I can tell you that I'm comfortable, when I was speaking with him, that it, it would be a good educational, be an open meeting, uh, does not have to be set with just a committee, um, of course, we'd have to make sure that we meet all the, the, the safety guidelines, so, that process can start after January, but that is not gonna be taken care of, of the increase of operations for the, the, the city in two thousand twenty-one or two thousand twenty-two, from my understanding of that, by the time, first of all, you gotta raise, I, I'm just, heard the number of seven million dollars, um, someone's gonna pay that cost, now, I don't know, you know, if that could be something that we can all join into, with municipalities, the cities, and things like that, so, I mean, that's a discussion that we can have, but it is not going to fix our budget two thousand twenty-one or two thousand twenty-two, so we still have a responsibility of, what are we gonna do when it comes time to write the checks, and there's, and, and if we use all the one-time money up, there is nothing there to save us, unless we sell the city building, we have to market that, we have to, there's a lot of things to, to take a look at, Jim's exactly right, there could be a lot of changes coming, but, we've talked about it, that, that city building's been sitting down there for how many months now, and, and where are we at with it, um, you know, maybe we can get that worked on also in January, um, there are things that we can do, but I'm not comfortable in using up one-time money, not knowing what we're gonna be facing in two thousand twenty-one to two thousand twenty-two, we did not expect to have a pandemic thrown at us beginning of March, so, that's my input, and again, I just want to refer back to it, I, I, I'm not pleased with raising taxes, but I don't see any other way to fix this issue right now, that's my opinion.
I'd just like to throw in too, is, is the marketing, the city building, if we raise taxes, it just makes it that much harder to sell, but I mean, that's neither here nor there, and, uh, the reassessment is, is really a good thing for, like, Connyet School District, but it isn't gonna be, make great strides to the city of Meadville, not to our, our tax rates, but the Connyet School District would do great. You're on mute, Jim. Jim's on mute, he was saying something.
That's, that is not a correct statement, the city of Meadville, by and large, would be a major beneficiary, because our properties tend to be over-assessed, I was looking at a home with a friend over the weekend, uh, moderately priced home, and the taxes are about nine thousand dollars a year, all right, it's over-assessed, the one next to it, the taxes are about eleven or twelve thousand dollars a year, again, grossly over-assessed. So, I think, I, so-
I'm not disagreeing they are over-assessed, Jim, but there are properties right on the lakefront that are million-dollar properties that pay less than nine thousand dollars a year.
I absolutely agree that, that's the case, and at least they would be paying more of their share of county taxes, I, I think I did some quick napkin math, and if those properties were correctly assessed right now, the, uh, difference in county tax revenue might be, uh, high five or low six figures per year. And that's just, that's just part, two, small parts of two townships, forget the rest of the townships, forget, forget the, the townships on the either side of us, whose tax rates are lower, and whose assessments are lower, because these were done in a different era.
There's one other thing I want to add, Sean, and not to argue with you, we both, we both voted on the five million dollars, we knew it when we did it, but if we cut the services that we need to, to balance this budget, do you think you would have a better way of bringing people in the city of Meadville with less protection of police and fire?
Not today, Leroy, we, it's, we're gonna end up doing this increase, okay, but you're gonna have to do something next year, uh, you keep reading about, in the paper, they keep saying that the police are saying that our crime rate's up and stuff, it's because of poverty, okay, it's, it's because people are, are sitting around with nothing to do, and they're, don't have any money either, that's the problem with their crime rate, and there's a lot of poor people in this city, like I said, we built a nice Sandalini's that, where Chobies was, not Chobies, where, uh, Sandy's European Market was, they put in a real nice thing that's paying seven dollars an hour, a nice store, you know, I said, you know, that's not what the city needs, we need better stuff, but, I mean, that's what's there, and I like it, I realize why it's there, but, I just, uh, I don't know, just, you, I don't have any answers, if I had easy answers, I'd have gave them to you, I just know that raising taxes isn't gonna help people, bring people into the city, it ain't gonna make it easier to sell a house, I know that, except for there aren't a lot of houses on the market right now, I do know that, so.
So, we're, we're, uh, I mean, is, I'm gonna make sure everybody has time to make their comments, um, so Larry talked about a one-mil tax increase, we talked about a half-mil tax increase.
Leroy, if you adopt the budget as presented, you would need a half-mil tax increase.
Jim, will you support a half-mil tax increase?
I, I will, I don't like to, but I will.
I'm with Jim, I don't like to either, but I will.
So essentially, we're still kicking that provo-ral can down the road, you know? Because you're gonna be borrowing from a fund that you're, eventually you're gonna, you're going to deplete, that's, that's been the problem, we've been borrowing from funds in, in different places, and those funds, they run out of money, with no way to bring it back in, I understand raising a mil will make it a little difficult, uh, however, businesses are not going to come here if they're, if the fire and police departments are cut, I, I'm sorry, that's one of the things, uh, the comprehensive studies showed that, um, also, people, people I've spoken with, and people do understand that the taxes have not been raised in a while, and in order for us to continue to take care of the city, to provide the services, uh, we, we need to have a, a tax increase, the, the survey that Autumn did, it may not have been all, but those that participated were, were willing and understanding. So I, I say we, we should go with a mil.
And Autumn, I, just to throw in too, is I like your survey, and I do think it's helpful, thank you.
Thank you, Sean. Glad you liked it.
Autumn, would you support a one-mil tax increase? Let's go this route.
I, um, I would support a one-mil tax increase, given that we make commitments to move, um, on these kind of, uh, more responsible financial, um, options for the city, third-party billing, looking at moving dispatch, move, trying to move on countywide reassessment, a pilot program, looking at selling the city building, we can, if, if we can commit ourselves to these things, starting them in two thousand twenty-one, and moving on as many of them as we can, um, uh, I would, I would support a, a one-mil tax increase.
And Jim, you would not support a one-mil tax increase?
I would, I would not, because if we do those things, and I would support those changes, there would not be a need for a one-mil tax increase, even if those are not phased in for the entire year. If, if you change the, uh, police dispatch, if you go to third-party billing for, uh, fire services, even if you only have those kicked in for half of the year, those will represent savings, which would make the mil increase not necessary. Remember, with, with a budget, these are good faith estimates of what things are going to cost, and that's always a variable, electricity could drop, gasoline costs could drop, insurance costs could drop, and all of a sudden, instead of needing a one-mil tax increase, you have an extra mil of so-called free cash, because people are making-
Have you ever had a mil of free cash, Jim? Is this in your account, huh?
Yes, yes.
What'd you do with it?
Uh, put it away for capital improvements.
And, and let's be realistic, we, you're saying, you're saying if gas prices drop, if insurance, the way the economy is, the way things are going right now, we, let's be realistic, that's not going to happen, I don't believe that is going to happen, if we raise a mil, at least we know that we're working towards and building capital, uh, for expenditures that may, may come, if anything, insurance and things in gas may go up, more likely than going down, they may go down for a period of time, a penny to a nickel, maybe even a dime, but realistically, they're not dropping any further.
That may or may not be-
That's a wish, I'm sorry, let's be realistic, we need to have a solid way and, and path as to how we're going to get this city out of the deficit that we're in, like, making commitments, following through with them, raising it a mil, it can't hurt, I mean, that's a bad word, it, it, yeah, maybe a little tough to, to do, but we need to do it, we have to tighten our belts and, and, and get this under situational control, instead of continuously putting it off, putting it off, hoping and wishing, we know that we're gonna create some revenue with raising taxes, a half a mil is only seventy-some thousand dollars.
Last March-
You're still, you're still wanting to borrow from, from a fund, or take money from here to put over there, we need to quit doing that, we need to look at making money, and, and getting money coming in that we don't have to borrow from another fund, uh, to, to pay this fund, that's what's going on for still long.
I made the statement in front of council, at a public meeting, that we were gonna have about a three-quarter of million-dollar deficit, and that we needed to be addressing it now, nothing was done, and now here we are, and we're saying, well, maybe we have to raise taxes, if we raise taxes now, then there will be a sense of, uh, being lulled into thinking, well, okay, now we don't have to make those tough decisions, the point is, we need to make the tough decisions, whether it's, and I'm not saying reduce staffing, I'm just talking about looking at new service delivery modules, again, that is not a function of city council, but that is a, a function of departments and department heads, just as an example, every, every vehicle that you get rid of, that you don't really need, is hundreds of dollars a year in insurance, hundreds of dollars a year, uh, in, in gasoline, and hundreds of dollars a year in licensing and inspection and repair fees, okay?
Correct.
So, so if you have fifty vehicles throughout the city, and you can eliminate ten, okay, there's ten thousand dollars, there's probably close to the twenty thousand dollars, that's, that's painless, okay, but someone has to make that decision, and as long as we say, well, okay, we'll raise it a half a mil, or we'll raise it a mil, we're not gonna take the time and make that decision, we're not gonna say, why is this car sitting, uh, down by the Porter Street footbridge, or why hasn't been sitting there for years, okay?
Then do both, make the cuts with the vehicles if you, if you have that, and also raise your, 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 your taxes, you, you know, instead of just doing one, uh, I mean, our, our police chief, well, at the one meeting, was saying that he, that he feels they need a, a, a police car for the K-9, uh, our, our fire department, we know we're gonna need , uh, new equipment.
You know, I just want to point out to everybody, the menu in front of you is based on a five-hundred-thousand-dollar, one-time use of money to balance the budget for two thousand twenty-one, you're using five-hundred-thousand dollars of one-time money, that is not going to be there in two thousand twenty-one for two thousand twenty-two. So I'm gonna support a one-mil tax increase, because I feel, and personally, Jim, you're right, sometimes you gotta make some tough decisions, and this is one that I, I really feel that we need to do the one-mil tax increase when we're using five-hundred thousand, and I know I've been told I kiss the county, uh, quite a bit, but I'm gonna tell you something, if it wasn't for the county, we'd be facing a hell of a much more deficit of, and then a tax increase of four mils, because you're using the one-time five-hundred thousand dollars right now, and that's, and, and you can't continue to do that and start using up your balance funds, because if we had a major, a major disaster which has happened before in the city, there is no money there, I mean, you, you only have a hundred and thirty-one thousand dollars, you, you even go with a half a mil tax increase, a hundred and thirty-one thousand dollars doesn't fix most emergencies.
Correct, I agree with that.
So I would support a one-mil tax increase.
So we still have two actions to consider, the first one is whether to adopt the budget as presented, with those minor things on, uh, covered parking space and uncovered parking space, and once you do that, you need to do the funding. I mean, we, we've talked a lot about the funding, but are we, are we, basically, are we okay with the budget ordinance as presented?
But the budget ordinance that we're looking at right now is only a five-mil tax increase, if we need to change that, if you have three votes to take it to a one-mil, what do we need to do?
The, Your Honor, I guess procedurally, I would, since, before you have essentially a draft budget ordinance with, with this menu, I guess procedurally, maybe you vote this budget up or down as presented here, as presented here includes the half mil, and, because your budget is, is not only expenses, but it's revenue, so your budget document, the, the tax levy ordinance only gives you the authority to raise the revenue for the budget you adopted, so I think the budget, by adopting the budget, you're adopting both a revenue and expense budget, so procedurally, you could vote this one up or down, if this one fails, then you can vote a, a separate, a separate action.
So the one in front of us is for a half a mil tax increase?
Correct. Well, plus these other adjustments as you see here.
Okay, we have a motion on the floor, and we have a second, correct?
That was for the mil, if I'm not mistaken.
No, for what's presented here-
That was for a half a mil increase.
Okay.
What's presented on your screen?
So we have a motion, we have a second, any other discussion? This is including the point-five mil tax increase.
Correct, okay.
Roll call.
Uh, Donahue?
Aye.
McKnight?
No.
Uh, Rawa?
Aye.
Vogel?
No.
Stern?
No.
Do we have a motion to adjust this to a one-mil tax increase?
I make a motion to adjust it to a one-mil tax increase.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Any further discussion? Roll call.
Donahue?
No.
McKnight?
Yes.
Rowa?
No.
Vogel?
Aye.
Stern?
Aye.
Okay, so let's move on to new business. The ordinance, first and second reading, adopting or levying the taxes for 2021. Katie?
Well, your honor, so I'm not sure procedurally how we need to do this, because we need a first reading motion and a second reading motion for the adopting the ordinance. The first reading motion failed with the half-mill increase.
Elizabeth, you on line?
I am, your honor, yes.
All right, give us direction.
Okay, I think that you can amend the motion, make a new motion on the second item. Andy, can I see the agenda again, so I have the right words?
Can you see that now?
Yes, thank you, let me just magnify. Right, I think that you can make a motion that would amend- Yeah, that would amend what's being presented.
So would that be the motion that Larry just made?
Okay, so we're straight on that, so then I can ask for a second, please?
So this is the second reading motion, so we'll need a first and a second.
Did Larry make the first?
So you would need, I need two different motions. I need a first reading motion and then a second reading motion. So my understanding, if this is correct, Elizabeth, is Larry made the first reading motion, amending the budget for a one-mill increase?
Yes.
And now I need the second reading motion?
Yes.
I'll make the motion.
So then we should need a second?
I'll second the motion. Does everybody understand what we just did?
Yes.
Roll call.
Donahue?
No.
McKnight?
Yes.
Vogel?
Aye.
Rowa?
No.
Vogel?
Aye, I'll vote for just-
Stern?
Aye.
So that takes care of the ordinance for adoption of the budget, is that correct?
Yes.
Yes.
Okay. All right, so now we are on to C ordinance, first and second reading, levying taxes for 2021. Katie?
Andy, do we want, do we need to amend the, fix this first?
Yeah, so council, let me, so the tax levy ordinance then, that you would have a hard copy of, was reflecting, the draft was reflecting the half-mill tax increase. So now, that would be needed to fund the budget that you adopted. So at this point, you would be going a full mill. Let me, I'm going to bring this up on the screen, if you give me just one second, please. Debbie, while I'm doing that, can you work on the adjusted math that we would need to reflect the additional half-mill?
Yes, it really will only affect the general revenue.
All right, so you can be prepared to share those numbers once I bring it up on So council, can you see my screen now, where this starts with general revenue here? Okay.
Correct.
So these are, if you did the half-mill tax increase right, you would have been at a 22.42-mill budget, comprised of the 13.81 mills for general purpose, 6.73 mills for debt retirement. We don't allocate millage or direct revenue for capital improvements. Recreation and parks, 1.63 mills, and then Shade Tree budget, .25 mills. That would total then this 22.42, which would have represented a half-mill tax increase, just a half-mill tax increase. So this would be amended, then your total millage would be 22.92 down below here. And Deb, you just said that nothing would change, nothing would change with Shade Tree, because we're not adjusting expenses there. We'd go up to general revenue, and you would have to increase that 13.81 by an additional half-mill, right?
Right, so it would be 14.31.
Okay, so that'd be the 13.81 plus additional half-mill for general purpose, and it'd be 14.31 then. So that's what this would reflect. You would have 14.31 for general revenue, the same debt retirement of 6.73, the same capital improvement of zero, the same recreation parks of 1.63, and the same .25 mills of the Shade Tree, for a total then of 22.92 mills, which then would represent a full one-mill tax increase from your current rate.
Is there any questions for Andy on that?
No.
Autumn, any questions?
No, I guess just to be clear, those other, the millage rates for like Recreation and Parks, Shade Tree, debt retirement, capital improvements, they're not changing at all, right? That's consistent, that has not changed from five years at all.
Correct.
Okay, all right, thank you.
Jim, any questions for Andy?
Not at this time.
Okay, thank you. Sean, any questions?
I'm fine.
Okay. So we have a-
Your honor, before you call the vote, I just want to explain, so just, you might, council might recall from the Pennsylvania Economy League presentation back in early November, or at the end of October, maybe, they had questioned how our allocation of resources for parks and recreation. We've adjusted it to your, actually somewhat lower than we have in prior years. So how we've arrived at that 1.63 mills for recreation and parks, that's literally our $125,000, Midbury Recreation Complex contribution, plus the parks maintenance expense budget. And that's, so that's what represents that 1.63 mills. In the past, we used a different formula, where we would take a certain percentage of the public works' overall budget. The net effect of that, that doesn't change your overall millage, it just changes how you allocate that millage. It just means that where we would have had in the past a slightly higher Parks and Rec millage, it actually, it makes your general purpose, your general revenue purpose millage higher at 13.8, well, higher. I just want to reflect that, that does a change from how we've allocated millage in the past, is more accurate to how, to what our expenses are.
Okay, thank you. Any other questions or discussion? Roll call.
Before we get to roll call, I have to read the ordinance-
Okay, you got it ready?
Yeah, I do.
All right.
An ordinance for the city of Meadville, Crawford County, Pennsylvania, levying the following taxes and fixing the rate of taxation for the city of Meadville for the year 2021. Being a tax for general revenue purposes, a tax to pay interest and principal on any indebtedness incurred pursuant to the Local Government Unit Debt Act, a tax for capital improvements, a tax for recreation and parks, a tax for shade trees, and a residence tax for general revenue purposes, all of which taxes are levied pursuant to the applicable authority and establishing the penalty charge for late payments of such taxes.
Katie, do we have a motion already and a second?
No, we do not.
Motion, please.
I motion.
Second.
I second to adopt the amendments we mentioned.
So what is the, what's the amendment, Leroy?
What's that, Jim?
Are we adding this on to general revenue millage?
Yes.
Yeah.
So instead of the 13.81, which is, it is now 14.31, correct?
Thank you.
Any other questions? Discussion? Roll call.
Donahue?
No.
McKnight?
Aye.
Rowa?
No.
Vogel?
Aye.
Stern?
Aye.
For the second reading, I need a motion, please.
I'll make a motion with the same amendment.
Second. I'll make the second. Discussion? Roll call.
Donahue?
No.
McKnight?
Yes.
Rowa?
No.
Vogel?
Aye.
Stern?
Aye.
And I promise council, you'll start hearing on it January, for the future decisions on all the things that we have talked about. Katie, we have a resolution D, setting 2001 storm rate fee, please.
A resolution of the Council of the City of Meadville, setting user fees to support the stormwater management system for calendar year 2021. Resolved by the Council of the City of Meadville, that whereas ordinance number 3707 of 2012, an ordinance of the city of Meadville, Crawford County, Pennsylvania, establishing a user fee to support the stormwater management system, was passed and enacted on October 3, 2012. And whereas the ordinance designates and defines equivalent residential unit as the measure of impervious ground cover for a typical single-family detached residential property, used in assessing the fees for each parcel of developed property, which has been determined to be 2,660 square feet. And whereas pursuant to section five of the ordinance, the charge per equivalent residential unit was set at $90 per program year from November 1, 2012, through December 31, 2015. And each January 1 thereafter, the charge per equivalent residential unit is to be adjusted annually as determined by the Council of the City of Meadville. And whereas the Council of the City of Meadville has determined that the new fee, beginning January 1, 2021, will remain the same $90 per equivalent residential unit for the calendar year 2021. Now therefore be it resolved by the Council of the City of Meadville, that the user fee to support the stormwater management system for the calendar year 2021 shall remain at the current fee of $90 per equivalent residential unit, effective January 1, 2021, and as described in section five of the ordinance number 3707 of 2012.
Motion, please.
I'm moved.
Second.
Thank you.
Discussion, Andy?
The resolution, your honor, is pretty self-explanatory. This proposes no change in the stormwater ERU rate or fee.
That's an average of $90, correct? Is that-
Yep, that's in the resolution. It's $90, $90 per equivalent residential unit, so a traditional single-family detached house, which is billed one billing unit, is a $90 bill.
All right. Any discussion for Andy?
Did I hear that there's a square footage also that has to meet?
One equivalent residential unit, yeah, one equivalent residential unit is 2,660 square feet, and the ordinance establishes a minimum of one billing unit for a developed parcel. So every developed parcel will receive at least, at least one, a bill for at least one ERU.
Thank you. Any other questions for Andy? Roll call.
Donahue?
Aye.
Aye.
Rowa?
Aye.
Vogel?
Aye.
Stern?
Aye. Resolution C, ratifying action taken by the city manager, Katie?
A resolution of the Council of the City of Meadville, ratifying action of the city manager to execute additional scope of work to include infrastructure, technologies, security measures with Hagan Business Machines of Meadville. Resolved by the Council of the City of Meadville, that the action taken by the city manager to execute the additional scope of work for infrastructure, technologies, security measures, in the one-time amount of $12,800, and adding a monthly service amount of $1,410 to the existing IT support agreement between the city of Meadville and Hagan Business Machines of Meadville for managed IT network services, is hereby ratified as and for abiding in effective action of the city of Meadville in accord with its terms.
Motion to ratify, please.
I motion.
Second.
I'll second.
Discussion, Andy?
Yes, your honor, council. So this is, this additional scope of work, you'll recall that we had changed network service providers, or IT consultant, back in early October, it was actually at your October 7 council meeting, that we entered into a contract with Hagan Business Machines for our monthly managed network services contract. This additional scope of work beyond that contract, as referenced in the resolution, is additional one-time project fee of $12,800, and then additional monthly services, monitoring services of $1,410. Came about after your action there. Shortly after we entered into that contract, we were made aware that there had been some suspicious traffic data leaving our server. And so that represented a security threat to the city, and so we took immediate measures. It was actually October 8 that we were made aware of that. We took immediate measures to shut down our network to the outside world, to further evaluate that threat. And this scope of work emanated was additional work recommended by Hagan for additional valuation additional software, and related to that security threat. Essentially, just to bring that home and bring that conclusion, ultimately, we've determined that, so during our shutdown, when we had to shut down our server and our network and our email to the outside world, the general public wasn't impacted, there were no safety concerns, radio, telephone communications were operable, we were without email for a few days, but we were able to get that back functional within three or four business days. So there was no impact to the general public. But essentially, we've ultimately determined that there was no compromise of any city data. And in Pennsylvania law, frankly, there's specific breach law, which is a new area of the law. And I did seek outside legal counsel's opinion that, quote, "No evidence exists that any personal information for any individuals was compromised or exfiltrated in any way. The city has not suffered a data breach. The city sustained a data incident which has been properly contained, investigated, and resolved. The city has no obligations under the Commonwealth of Pennsylvania statutes or any other state or federal statutes to notify any individuals or governmental agencies about this data incident." So essentially, the action here, though, is just to ratify the action that I took to enter into this additional scope of work to protect the city's network and data, and I'm just asking you to ratify that, to make it official. I will further note that these costs, right, that the one-time project cost of $12,800- I will further note that these costs, right, that the one-time project cost of $12,800 is being expensed in this year's budget, the ongoing monthly fees are included in the budget that you just adopted.
Okay, I want to thank you staff and Higgins getting on that right away. I know that took some time and effort and appreciate that. Any other questions or comments for Andy? Hearing none, roll call.
Donahue?
Aye.
McKnight?
Aye.
Rowa?
Aye.
Vogel?
Aye.
Stern?
Counsel member's statements. Jim, I'll start with you this evening.
Oh, thank you. I'd like to recognize Bill Thomas, who is going to be retiring at the end of December from the City of Meadville Housing Authority. He's done a wonderful job over the years. I would also note with sadness the passing of his mother, her obituary was in this morning's paper. I have nothing further, Your Honor.
Thank you, Jim. Sean, I'll go with you.
I've said enough tonight, thanks, Leroy.
All right, Sean. Autumn, I'll go with you.
Sure, I just want to say thanks to the folks who are, they need to work to support their neighbors right now, it's a difficult time, I appreciate the folks that are doing that. In particular, I'll bring up again, Andy mentioned it earlier, but counsel was contacted by Lynn McCumber, the Director of CHAPs, informing us that Meadville is entitled to 40 additional Section 8 vouchers through a special COVID relief program that HUD is offering. The vouchers would ensure that 40 additional Meadville residents and families who are struggling to make ends meet right now would have access to affordable housing. Folks can even use these vouchers in their current house or apartment if they pass HUD inspection. And this also, so it ensures people have an affordable place to live when it might be a challenging time for them. It also ensures that local landlords have consistent income and that their tenants aren't late, they're defaulting on rent, or they've got to go through the process of eviction. All around, I think it's a really important opportunity and so needed in our community right now, especially as our county is still facing high unemployment rates and unemployment compensation is coming to an end for a lot of folks. So I do encourage the housing authorities to take advantage of this opportunity and to allow the folks in our community who need it most to have access.
Thanks, Autumn. Larry?
Yeah, I agree with what, and like to thank all those, Lynn McCumber and all those that are working to try and get these vouchers for residents here. I'd like to thank Andy and his staff for all their hard work with this budget. And I'd just like to say to residents that, you know, we're working and trying to work with you and for you, and we appreciate your understanding. And again, if you have any comments or concerns, feel free to give me a call or, you know, contact city council to let us know how we can help or how we can be of service. And, you know, with this uprising COVID, please, everyone, wear your mask. It does help, and if you, if you've lost someone to it, you understand and you'll believe in it. So let's be safe, but sorry. That's all, Your Honor.
Thank you. I just received the numbers a little bit ago, 118 new cases from yesterday. I don't have a death number. It is very important that we wear our masks, use common sense, make sure you wash your hands. The numbers are rising. Whether you believe in it or not, people do die from this, and we've got to take it serious, we need to protect ourselves and our neighbors. I want to thank staff also for the hard work going through this budget. We may not all agree on how we come to the end of the budget, but overall, we're keeping the services to protect your residents and in your businesses. With that, I will ask for, oh, Andy, do we need an executive session?
Please, Your Honor, for real estate and litigation.
Okay, do we stay online or do we need to call back in?
Nope, you can stay here once we, once we've closed out the meeting, but yeah, don't hang up.
Okay. Motion to adjourn, please.
Most, two, second session.
Okay, we're just second that. Roll call.
Donahue?
Aye.
McKnight?
Aye.
Rowa?
Aye.
Vogel?
Aye.
Stern?
Aye, thank you.